I think that's fine. There you go. Leave it open. First blast of fall. Thank you all for coming out. Mary Ann and I are still trying to work through how to do this combining a work session into a board meeting. So I don't know what work session discussion one and two is. I'm just gonna go through what I prepared here. And then we'll get to public comments after I work through these first few slides. So thank you for being here. Worked through it. Got the department activity reports. Board, we're doing better, but we're still not where we want to be yet. Where is Joey at? I thought that was Joey I was looking for. Somebody, if you would find Joey, please. And we're getting there, but we're not quite there yet. I hope to have this ironed out. Some of this is my fault and some of this is theirs. It's just, but we're trying and we're almost there. So this is kind of what they look like. This was fire. This is the order I got them in. This was the number of calls that they had. Still, are we still having, today you did a storm siren check. Was there still two that didn't work, Green Brook and Highway 468 at the armory? So both of them out, okay. Pafford, 165. Response time with an ambulance, under 10 minutes. Average response time for the fire department, 574, which is great. EMS, 139. So it's easy to see that most of the calls are EMS calls these days. And you see their training hours. And please remember these things. If you've got any specific questions for them, when they get up there in a little bit, we'll answer those. Calls for service for police, 1,733. Arrest, 57. And sanitation. I ask them all the time, Chief, I'll remind you, sometimes we need to take pictures of the amount of garbage that these people pick up. I would ask two things. Everybody needs to slow down. And everybody needs to be cognizant about garbage being thrown out. If you see somebody throwing something out and you can let the police know, there is a nice citation they can get for that. And I've done it. So, Public Works, I don't know where Alex went, but ProTel calls, you see the number that's coming into our call center board. And I've got some ideas I'm gonna bring to you. Probably I'll try to get it done in the second board meeting in November. But 4,000 is a lot of calls. I see a way to negate and reduce some of that. We pay a fee per call when it goes in there. That's how our contract works with them. Had 288 reported calls on water and that type thing. And you see utility billing down at the bottom, which means we collected 1.2, but we bill for 1.278, which is about $10, what, $16,000 difference. So we're always behind. It's just the way it works. Sometimes people move and leave and we get stuck with a billing in. All right. The community development stuff is, you see, well, this is water again. This is the, what we get from census. 568 minor calls, 634 total calls. And you see, even though it is a programmable piece of equipment, there are errors on occasion. So don't ever think they're not infallible. What are you bringing in here, Joey? I'm sorry, this is what? What is this? All right. I made you something in front of your desk based on your and Gray and I's conversations. Simplify the plan of action. It's laying right there in front of you. All right. And this is some of their numbers that we pulled out of that. Tolls, commercial and residential, permits, signs, other fees, contractors, rentals. And yes, we do need to move toward enacting a rental ordinance and getting there. But we gotta find some people that'll work in community, in community, in community development first. Board, I meant to add that on the agenda tonight, but I didn't do it. So it's bad on me, Joey. I think we need to enact our group that we've used to help us find employees in the past. We got an AP clerk upstairs that they helped find. And these two gentlemen here before us were first introduced to me by Billy Sims. And I think we need to add that. So if someone will remember, I think we need to put them down to be looking for code enforcement people. If we get that, to that point, Mr. Baker, which, could you remember that? When we get to that in the agenda, please. I'd like to contract with them to begin to find and solicit applications for code enforcement. I don't. I'm not, that's what I'm saying. I meant to add it tonight. It's a, it's a standard. They've done that for us multitude of times. All right. Then I'll wait two weeks and have it on the agenda in two weeks. So we'll have it down. So Mary Ann, would you make a note, please, that I need to call Billy Sims tomorrow and get that for our next board meeting. Violations by Ward, 123456. See the numbers there and what are those violations? The vast majority of them are parking out off the driveway and in the yard. Variety of things going on. Again, we need about three people and need two code enforcement, one building inspector, and that's what we're looking for. So Marcus, if you want to go to work, you want to close the paper and go to work, we'll put you to work. Put, before you got a hard copy, if you want to get it out and look at it, it's right in front of you. I left some on the table in the back, back there. That is what it's gonna take to get us to an adoption of the new zoning map and ordinance. So that's the timeline. So we had a lot of conversation about just wanting to pause things and all that kind of stuff for last. So, board, as I look at it, that's August, September, October, November, December to get through that, to get to the end of this. So that's basically a six-month time for anything, a pause, if that's whatever I kept hearing out of everybody's mouth. They just wanted to pause the application process, and that's kind of what I see. So Gray and Joey spent a lot of time working on that, and I took their comments. And Gray's the one that wrote most of that. Joey perused it, made a few changes, and there you go. Joey, are you in agreement with that? Okay. All right. Well, you can speak to it more when you get up in just a little while. So you've got that hard copy, and I would ask that you hold admin to that. And we'll move on with getting that adopted. I had a nice event Saturday morning, even though it was kind of cool. Had a lot of people out there fishing at a, little fishing rodeo. Had a lot of kids, a lot of big smiles. Very happy with them. Came off really well when it warmed up a little bit. We also had a, an event at City Hall. So board, I want to thank you for allowing us to get started, work early on the Civic Center. You'll see that when we get to the Veterans Breakfast next week. But all that work that's been going on in there and in the back, and they're still not quite done yet. But Phase One is going on. I hope to bring Phase Two, Phase Two to you shortly. And ask to put it out for bid, once we get this one taken care of. But we did have a nice show in there Saturday night. That was the leadoff artist. Can't remember the name, I'm sorry. And then, of course, the mainliner. So there were 1,555 people here that scanned the ticket that came in the building. They were parked from Trustmark Bank all the way up the hill, everywhere, everywhere else. So great event. Just need more of them. So, well attended. Veterans Day Breakfast coming up. Thank you, Chris, for mentioning voting. And remind everybody that City Hall is a double voting precinct for the county. The room has been set up, ready to go for tomorrow morning. And we will have a Veterans Breakfast in there on November the 11th. Marcus Bowers was kind enough to build an ad, which will be in the Rank County News. Really look forward to that. That was the christening. Shared that with the board when I was allowed to go, and thank you for that experience. That was something I'll never forget. And that is Janet on the right, Janet Wilson Taylor, who is, will be here to speak for Veterans Day in that christening. And that's her on the right, her mom and dad on the left. She was an only child. On the left, that's Jane and Louis. And she liked to tell the story that they came up with her name by adding a T and an E. So ET. Jane became Janet and Louis became Louise, and that's how she was named. Very sharp lady, extremely sharp. Very happy and proud to get to know her and glad she's agreed to come here from Birmingham. All right. We're gonna get on with the agenda now. Is anybody here this evening that would like to make public comment before the board? All right. Seeing none, we will move on through the business of the board. Oh, business, approve the work session and regular board meeting minutes of October 20th, 2025, and the special call board meeting minutes of October 28th, 2025.
Motion.
Who said that? Motion by Jared Crane. Second, Mr. Harry Williams. Any conversation on those? And Mark here, was that? That was left up here. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Audience, anybody else that might be paying attention, there's one empty seat down here. David, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned earlier, his granddaughter has a basketball game, and he will be walking in the door sometime sooner or later. All right. Two items on the agenda under the mayor. Consideration to approve pay request number two from Gilrith Construction Company, LLC, in the amount of $93,218.75 for the Civic Center Big Room Innovation and authorized payment of the same. Hello, David. Glad you made it. Number two, request permission for myself and Mr. Mark Baker Esquire to travel to Washington, DC to attend a Supreme Court hearing. Gabriel Oliver versus City of Brandon, Mississippi, which is scheduled for December the 3rd, I believe, 2025. Involves a case that went to all the way to Supreme Court and would like to be there to observe that and how we're represented in Washington. Is there a motion to approve or any discussion on those two items?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sharon Romack, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Let the record show that Mr. David is here. All right. So board, here is Ms. Mary Ann.
Mary, can we take number three?
Please. I asked, and nobody, I did ask if anybody wanted to say anything, and nobody raised their hand. Oh, come on. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Did you not hear me? Ah, it's all right. You good? Come on. Yes, sir. Yeah. Hey, John, do me a favor, please. We only have one working microphone in here. Could you come over here and just step in, step, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, we had, we had a bad microphone. We're getting a lot of feedback in here, so we took it out of the system, trying to get two more. Mary Ann, you got to have, there's a button, and the green light will come on.
About now.
Oh, yeah. A little better. Can you hear? Okay. Thank you, John.
The flooding that was within inches of our home that, that I didn't know about because I had checked and I wasn't living in a flood zone. After many calls of researching the flooding problems and felt like getting nowhere, I emailed all members of the city on June 6th, 2024, of the severity of the problem and the city code of ordinance pertaining to ongoing problems in the Rain Tree subdivision. That needed attention and solving. I know Mr. Miller has done a lot of work to figure out how to solve this problem that has come up with some answers that could fix and estimate cost of wealth, or costs as well. I myself have talked to the Swillys' children that own the property behind Kyle Thompson's property, where floodwater comes through, and they are willing to help by allowing the city to build a retention pond that would save the flooding and cut a lot of costs as long as a pipe in the ground that has been bad since 2015 gets replaced, as we have been told over and over and brought to the city's attention as far back as 2016. And Mr. Miller was sent to start the research of fixing, which we were told the city was trying to get started repairing by October of 2024. And now, as of today, in October 2025, a year after start was supposed to happen, and nothing has been done. The problem has been brought to the city's attention as early as 2016, and I have personally continued to address this now since 3/3 of 2023. And as of today, there's no resolution and the issue continues to be pushed off. As of August 18, 2025, Board of Alderman meeting, the mayor had presentations about flooding in Rain Tree and other subdivisions. First point, mayor said, was that when this happens, the system is doing what it is designed to do because of no flooding in a house. In Rain Tree, this is incorrect because our water drainage system is designed to handle Rain Tree drainage. But due to all the water from Dever Street that is funneled to our Rain Tree subdivision system, it cannot handle that because it's not designed to handle that much water from another neighborhood and backup and flooding happens. Dever Street subdivision drainage system was not properly constructed because they have no system. The last new property was built within the last two years and graded. It's under current city codes of ordinance and should have been addressed and not violate codes to dump massive amount of water to adjacent neighbors or our subdivision, but it was passed by city permit and inspection. Second point, the mayor spoke of unrealistic cost of $2,272,588 for our subdivision fix. Mayor said a subdivision that has never wa, that's never had water in it of flooding a house, which, that part is true, but it's untrue since it has been known since 2016, has progressively gotten worse since 2022 and causing unsafe conditions and complete totaling of cars that he came to see the last time, but the water had recided before he got there. Talking with other long-term residents, viewing personal emails and talks with the city, has ignored prior to 2022. I believe this figure is unrealistic being reported due to I have personally brought alternative answers, and the city has made no effort to pursue other options that would resolve and cut costs tremendously. Third point mayor spoke of was Mr. Talbott expanded his driveway in November of 2020 and causing crushing of a drain pipe that led to increasing the flood problem. This pipe was reported in 2016 and could have been fixed then, but again, the city chose not to do anything and say that the drain was stopped up by debris and did nothing. Totally unprofessional to point fingers and make statements to him when the city chose to do nothing. And I do have that, that paperwork. We, as taxpayers in Rain Tree subdivision in Brandon, should not have to live in fear of flooding in non-flood area that the city should have corrected. We have been told over and over that this was going to be addressed and fixed. I have seen city engineer investigating and trying to come up with solutions that has gone nowhere. I've exhausted all means of trying to get city to solve and not being fixed. I ask why. Some city codes of ordinance are enforced, but not all. When I ask why, no, not being enforced, I get no answer. After what I have dealt with in this matter and other neighbors by talking and pleading with the city that this problem has gone on long enough due to the negligence of the city since 2016 to today by not addressing it over the years and choosing to put this on the forefront to be taken care of. It's time for a resolution, and especially before rain season is in full season. I'm greatly concerned that due to the unsafe conditions that have expressed over and over of electrical boxes being submerged in my yard. Emergency vehicles can't get through when flooded. Residents can't get to and from their house in the fear of constant flooding of the possible property damage. Isn't going to get resolved until a serious problem of someone getting serious injured in need of emergency assistance that they can't get. And at this point, with electrical issues, possibly death, reports resolved. And I will be sending this email to each and every one of you with all the stuff to back up everything I've said. Am I trying to attack y'all? I'm just really upset because I have dealt with this for, since the day I have moved here. And I have emails that I have written up to you. Thank you.
Yes, sir, John. Thank you. All right, ma'am. No.
Do number three as a standalone, and we'll do that one.
Last.
Number one, we press permission to publish the notice to accept bids for municipal deposit point services for our period beginning January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2029. Number two, consideration to pay an additional .59.29 in lease payment to the Rankin County School District on a piece of 16th section land due to a new CPI rent adjustment. Number four, consideration to approve the proposed 2026 holiday schedule and any additional dates as proclaimed by the governor in 2026. Also, the governor has proclaimed Friday, November 28th, 2025, December 26th, 2025, and January 2nd, 2026, as official state holidays. Number five, consideration to approve adoptive claims and Fox Everett claims. Number six, presentation of court on courts for the quarter ending September 2025 as filed with the State of Mississippi Department of FNA. There's a Senate Bill 2948, House Bill 1363, House Bill 603, Senate Bill 2468, and two most.
Thank you, Mary Ann. But each one of those is a, is a separate grant that we have to keep up with and give reports to. And appreciate Mary Ann doing a good job on it. So we got a motion. Is there a motion to approve one, two, four, five, and six?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Jared Crane. Second, Mr. Harry Williams. Any discussion on any of those or questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. And I'm leaving the room.
Okay, can we get some batteries for the, for that? Because I'm, it's not working.
Test one.
Okay, mayor, the mayor has left the boardroom. The matter on the agenda now is consideration of the adoption of an ordinance sitting in the city of the mayor, as provided. The mayor pro tem is now providing evidence.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second, by Lou. All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, and the record reflect the key to my vote. You showed Mr. Mayor both hands.
Yes, sir.
Okay, who's up? Alex. Board, we have two new microphones in the, and they will be functioning by the next board meeting. You're gonna have to talk loud, please.
I will.
Permission to take these together?
Yeah. You want to take all eight together? Okay, go ahead.
Consideration to approve the following invoices from Hydro Service for the emergency repairs at Apple Ridge Lift Station and authorized payment of the same. Number two, consideration to declare an emergency to the repairs to the Stone Hinge Lift Station, approved invoice 7875 in the amount of $9,568.98 from Harvey Services. Number three, consideration to approve the adjustment approvals and denials pursuant to the memo. Number five, consideration to approve the attached quote from Burny Dirt and Gravel, LLC, for trucking services at the rate of $95 an hour per 15-yard tandem dump truck. The quote for Burny Dirt and Gravel will be effective November 4th, 2025, through September 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Skip For.
Oh, excuse me. Number four, consideration to approve quote number 1028-CTO1 in the amount of $7,700 from Hydro Services Incorporated for additional repairs on the Cornell portable bypass pump. Number six, consideration to approve two four-foot by seven-foot trench boxes in the amount of $10,393 from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company. A second quote was received from United Rentals in the amount of $12,720. The trench boxes were budgeted items in the FY26 budget. Consideration to approve, number seven, consideration to approve the final payment estimate and final payment from MDOT to the City of Brandon in the amount of $54,552.85 for the Marquette Road Multi-Use Path Project and authorized execution of the same. Number eight, consideration to approve the quote in the amount of $15,660 from Perco Rentals for a one-month rental of a 14-ton crawler dump truck for the use while cleaning drainage easements across the city. A second quote was received from Enviro Rentals in the amount of $15,862.96.
Thank you. And board, that last one is a dump crawler that will crawl in the ditch so that we can go all the way up to Terriffen and come down to East Gate and get both sides of that to try to clean that ditch out before winter gets here. Okay? All right. Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Lou Coker. Any further discussion on any of those items? All in favor, say aye. Okay.
The first, the first one, Alex, has, when was the emergency declared? Because we don't say that. We normally do if we're doing repairs down in the back.
I'll have to look back. This was for the rental to the bypass, for the bypass pump until we made the repairs to Apple Ridge. This was for the rental to the bypass, for the bypass pump until we made the repairs to Apple Ridge Lift Station.
I know, but that emergency had been previously declared, right?
It had.
I'm just gonna leave it blank, but we all know, but I do need to have that information for a minute.
Okay, absolutely. I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
I ain't got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Thank you, board. Thank you, Alex. All right, Joey.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to apologize for my tardiness. We had some, uh, travel, last-minute comments from, uh, some consultants, uh, CNPDD, Barbara, last-minute revisions, and then, of course, IT completely disabling my office on all internet and phone calls. So I had to go outside, try to finish it and get it behind me. But, um, I know that I just presented this packet to you guys without you viewing it first. Uh, the purpose of, um, I just wanted you, if we could just wait until we get to that discussion item before we open and go over it. There's no action intended. Uh, hopefully, no action is going to be made. But, uh, I'd love to see what, show everybody where we're going, what we're doing, and make sure that we are aligned on the idea that the board has in mind. With that, there's a, I want to start with, could I request removing item two from the agenda? I spoke to the applicant and he does not believe he will be prepared in time. Have sufficient data for that.
All right, item two's removed. Don't do any more on that. So. Do you want to, do we need to vote on these individually? I'm trying to let him.
Could I do, uh, one and three together? Is that possible?
Yes.
All right, uh, number one, set a public hearing for the regular board meeting of November seventeenth, 2025 consideration of a rezone request from Jim Eichelberger on behalf of D, D, and G Investments Incorporated, rezoned property located at the southeast corner of Highway eighteen and Highway four sixty-eight. Says parcel number I eight B dash three from ROR to NC Neighborhood Center.
Wait, what is it?
He said in a public hearing.
He said in a public hearing.
What you need?
I'm just trying to catch up. How many, how many action items we don't have today on your, thank you, there?
Three total. It'd be one, three, excuse me, four total, one, three, four, and six.
All right, so you're doing one and three right now. So you just read one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now you're gonna read three.
Number three is case number twenty-five oh two five. Consideration of development approval for the proposed new office building for TLA Investments. The applicant has requested approval, constructed new ten thousand square foot three-story office building located at nine seventeen Marquette Road.
All right. Got something else?
Joey, um, on number three, I believe in the information that we were given, there were some action or some things that the, um, the business needed to handle. Um, and then they sent a letter October twenty-ninth saying they had handled those. Did, have we checked that? And now those items have been addressed?
I guess so. That was my understanding.
Okay, and it does meet the approval of you and, I guess, your employees, your staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Joey, you got anything else you want to add on one and three?
Yeah, could I, um, after I looked at it, sorry, it was a little blurry vision. But, uh, could I do, uh, number four as well, please?
No, let's just go ahead and finish one and three.
All right, one and three.
All right, you done with one and three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve one and three? Motion by Mr. Sharon Willmac, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign? All right, Joey.
All right, uh, number four, can I take that one alone? Uh, case number twenty-five zero three nine, consideration of a comprehensive sign plan for Consolidated Pipe, which is located at one ten Marquette Road.
All right, is that in your packets, boy? Okay? Anything else you want to add on that, Joey? Mr. Baker, you anything?
Mayor, I have a question about that.
Sure.
So, so actually, they're proposing two different places for signage, but they're both on the building?
Oh, we're doing that, Alex?
What'd you say, Jim?
Two hundred and seventy pages, yeah. Okay, uh, Chris, just, uh.
There it is.
Make sure I heard your question right. Your question was?
I'm looking for.
According to what we have, it looks like there's two different locations, but both of them are on the building.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm just making sure they're not proposing some hundred-foot pole sign.
On the side.
They're definitely on the building. I didn't want to miss the, yes or no.
Okay.
Over the front door and on the side of the building to be seen from eighteen.
It's just kind of hard to figure out where that's going.
So there's no monument sign? It's just two, over the front door, the smaller one, and the one on the side of the building.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Good question. Anything else on that? Everybody understand what it looks like? Joey, you got anything else you want to add to the sign for Consolidated Pipe? All right, is there a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane. Second by Mr. David Ferris. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign? Okay, Joey, so we're to five and six?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, what are, what are we doing?
We're just, just discussing, uh, Mark, and again, I, I know that.
Okay, so what about the other public hearing?
That's, that's, that's a consideration to set the public hearing on December first for this, uh, comprehensive zoning map revisions. And also, uh, for any language in the zoning ordinance respective to those changes.
Okay, what about the public hearings, the November seventeen ones, one and two? We only got rid of one. Are we doing another one or are we getting rid of both of them?
No, we're still doing the rezoning of that. They just don't want to apply for conditional use. They're just trying to separate.
Okay, we haven't done that yet, sir.
That's right.
Okay, so you provided the board a phase one draft. You want to talk about that for a minute?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, important to highlight that that's, uh, is a draft, yeah, it's a working draft. You'll notice if I provided, um, some, some red lines that are proposed currently. You'll notice that a lot of the sections are, please just disregard the section numbers themselves and the references to, until we get this tracking off the red line. It makes it a little difficult, but the final product will, uh, to present, uh, will be, will be situated. Um, there, there's a few, I guess, I guess, uh, I don't know for you to make a motion to discuss. What do we do with that, Mayor? Just want to make sure I'm getting it.
You're good.
We are good. Thank you, thank you, Mark. First discussion item, guys, so making sure. All right, uh, so the purpose of this is, uh, we, with this, there's, there's a need to get this zoning map, uh, brought up. So, uh, we propose to do this in two phases, one, uh, the zoning map and again, the, the language regarding certain districts. And there was some conversation about the planning commission, which we'll go over in depth as we go through this. Uh, also, there's.
What you need?
A BTR, which we have a current moratorium in place. The language is intended to also, uh, not everyone has one, guys. That's why I was late there. So there's, everybody has one of the, uh, of the summary of changes.
You need one? That's my observation. When you do red lines like that, it really confuses everybody more than not. So I don't know that that's really a helpful thing, but we're missing one up here. Is that right? You missing two? Uh, give him that, go that way with that one. So Harry's missing one.
I figured the red line would be a lot.
All right, wait a minute, so. Okay, all right. We all share that one till I get you a spare. Okay? I, I really don't think it's, uh, are, are you trying to hit specific things in this text that you just gave everybody or what? What'd you give it to them for?
Significant changes. I'm not going through everything unless you asked me to. I was, I was more wanting to discuss and I would like to hit the significant changes to make sure.
You got a list of significant things?
Well, that's, that's what, you have, you provided a two book, sir. Uh, one of them is the red line, the other one is the significant change, the smaller one there.
This is, so they all need to be looking at this if you want to go through significant changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and they can take the other home and study it at their convenience and come back for the next board meeting? Or contact you? All right.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was the whole purpose, I imagine.
Okay.
I didn't want to seem like I was.
Follow that, boy, so.
About getting a lower map, like Florida? Yeah, one like this one.
No, this was, this, well, we're, we're still not there yet. We'll get you one. Remember, I gave you this one. This was the, the trouble places in there they're trying to work through? Okay, so we'll have that for you. Is that what that is?
That's what that is. Again, working draft.
All right. I understand, working draft. Look, so this is what you gave us last time. It had all the circles on it with all the problems you were trying to work through. Is that one corrected from this one?
That is correct.
So that is the most current?
That is the most current as of this morning, so.
All right, so tomorrow, if you would, get that to Tim and let's get that on the big printer and print eight copies of that for everybody to have. Okay? And we'll fold it up and put it in a box. Mary Ann, you making a note to that? Okay? So what exists in these books that you just gave us is, is, Joey?
I'm listening to you, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that what's in these books?
That and what's in your books are the same, yes, sir.
Is the same, okay.
It's a little hard to read, so I.
That's right. We'll have a, we'll have a large one tomorrow. Okay? And if something goes wrong with Tim's printer, we'll go to Benchmark or we'll go somewhere else and we'll get, we'll get those printed. So I need to let the board know tomorrow when they're in their box and available for pickup.
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right, now you're gonna begin to work through. I see you making notes or something? Are you gonna talk through significant changes that you have here?
And also wanted to, I wanted to make sure.
Well, I, I just want, look, I want you to look up. I know you're trying to read at the same time. That's all, no, no, that's all, you're, you're doing fine. I just want you to look up and when you see board members up here talking among themselves, I need you to pause and let them finish their conversations. Sharon Jeremy, Sharon David, maybe Haven or somebody, you know, because something is of interest that you're talking about. So just look, that way we can all keep up with you, all right? Okay? All right, significant changes. Go ahead. We're all ready.
So, uh, in Article one, there's, there's, I would call it a significant change. Uh, there's been a, a little internal hesitation, okay, or rather interpretation of, hey, uh, does this, does this zoning ordinance, which, which takes precedence, the development ordinance or if there's any conflict with, or is it zoning ordinance? And so this section one point eight consistency with related regulations, they're supposed to simplify that. But it added a new provision clarifying that zoning shall be interpreted harmoniously with related codes such as development ordinance and building codes, right? Uh, that, and of course, that significance is, is breaking these cross ordinance consistency, clarifies administrative hierarchy when overlap and codes apply. And, uh, it reduces that interpretation dispute with the intent.
Uh, I don't know that I'm following you.
No? Okay, um, so for example, in Article five, you zoning ordinance, if you open it up, I don't have the books, I'm having to go off my memory here. Article five is development standards. If there's an instance of just sort of sidewalks, for example, and what's the minimum width that is required, the zoning ordinance may require in a certain district. Development ordinance requires it maybe in other areas and, and the zoning ordinance may specify in certain districts, uh, what the minimum width can be, but then you have a conflict. This is just one of many potential conflicts. Which one takes precedence, right? The system interpretation, uh, solver, you know, for any conflicts that might happen during review. And also for any outside developers, so the ease of them, um, understanding what our intent is and so that they can submit us documents to help, uh, speed up some of the review processes. Does that help with reading books, neighbor books, or?
I'll catch up. No, I'm not, I really, I'm not tracking where he going. I'm gonna be honest with you. And if I'm not, I'm sure somebody else up here isn't either. I, I don't understand where you're coming from. You're speaking exactly to what? Wording that you, that we need to change in the zoning ordinance? Is that right?
This is an added, this is an additional language that was not.
Additional language that is not in there?
So it's, it's added between one point six and one, I believe it's one point six, one point seven. So you have a conflict clause. It's just a, it was a significant point that I think would help some of this, uh, when we apply some, when the zoning ordinance is adopted, to help us apply some of those provisions effectively.
Okay, can I, can I ask you, do you, do you have a red line of this in here? Would you just explain?
Yeah, it's, uh, one point, section one point eight.
What page do I have to go to to see the red line in the big book?
Article one, right there in front, one point eight, Article one.
I think that'd be good. So, look, we're not, we'd, we'd sit here for another three hours. All right, so we're just gonna schedule this to start off with at our next board meeting?
Those already, yes, sir. Those already only discussed, intended to discuss it for review.
Okay. So that'll give everybody an opportunity to review it and they'll have the big map in front of them. Thank you for that suggestion. Okay. Okay? All right. Okay. So we need another hard copy bill, need maps, and we'll set a date post haste. All right? Good, Joey? Okay.
Do we still, would we still like to set that public hearing for December, December first?
Well, on, uh, the diagram that you and Gray and I agreed to, it said December first or the fifteenth.
Yes, sir, just to set the, okay, fair enough, for the fifteenth. We'll just wait.
So I, I would say we need to set that public hearing for the fifteenth, second board meeting in December. If we're gonna do something, Mr. Baker.
I have time for proper notices fifteen days before, so I just want to make sure.
Sure. I mean, I, I've got a draft and ordinance, I've got to get it all, are you having the public hearing? You expecting to take action on the fifteenth?
On the fifteenth, uh, as far as December fifteenth?
Yes.
Well, the intent was hopefully to move past and get action on the first, but if it's the fifteenth, yes, sir, that was, that was the hope.
So you want action on the day of the public hearing? So the ordinance will be ready, we'll have it all drafted with all the changes by then?
Well, that was the hope, yes, sir.
Okay, sure.
But if, again, we have another discussion or two to have, right? There's no need to set it today if we think it's not.
Wait for your work session and see how you're going before you notice it?
Yeah, I just need to hurry up and get it scheduled, because, uh, life's still busy.
Well, you got a 15-day, you're going to have a 15-day time that you're going to have to put the notice in the paper, so.
I'm running a calendar in my head, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's just got to run in the paper, and we got to have.
And Thanksgiving week, fall and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so, I don't know if December 15th works, but I mean, you're going to get your work session done, and you might, I don't know.
Okay, work session's not going to be this week, because it's going to take you that much time to digest that in the map. So, I'll try to get it scheduled next week. We'll sit down in the morning, look at the calendar, and plot that out, okay, Joey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, man. Sounds good. All right. So, you have no further action, uh, of those two? There's no way, further action to take, is there, Mark? Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. All right, Chief. Grab your calendar while you're sitting there and start looking ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening. This day is, I don't know.
It's dead.
Uh, yeah, just talk loud, Sergeant.
Yes, sir. Uh, I've got six items. Can I take number one by itself and two through six together, please?
Uh, okay, go ahead.
Well, number one, uh, consideration of the application for pit wall, uh, breed variance by John Anderson at 7:30 Brookwood Circle. Uh, asking to set a public hearing November 17th at regular board meeting concerning that application.
All right. Do anything, Mr. Baker?
Okay. Yeah.
All right.
Number two is.
Well, oh, wait, you said take one by itself.
Correct, I'm sorry.
All right, so you want to set a public hearing for December?
Yes, sir.
Because that's not only action, either.
No, it's not, I'm writing. Set a public hearing. Partner.
In the backup material, it, the way I understood it was, they weren't going to do anything.
Indeed. They weren't going to do anything?
Yeah, I mean, they were just basically saying it stays inside all the time, and if you can't leave it like that, then.
Yes, sir. The recommendation that I was going to give was to give you all the facts as far as what's going on, and he doesn't have the proper, he's not going by what the city ordinance says. That's why I was going to bring it to you in the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, so you want a public hearing on December 1st?
Correct.
Next board meeting. Uh, concern, do what, Chief? You want the next board meeting or December 1st?
December 1st would be fine.
Okay, December 1st. For 7:30 Brookwood Circle. All right? Is there a motion to set that public hearing? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by me, Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Chief. All right, so you're going to take two through six, because seven doesn't exist? Unless you want to talk something specific about it.
Okay, no, don't have anything specific about number seven.
Okay. So, you're taking two through six?
Correct. All right, consideration approved the travel request for Sergeant Jared Bacon to travel to Pensacola, Florida for the staged crime scene investigations course. Number three, consideration approved travel request for Cody Moles to Baton Rouge, Louisiana to attend a hands-on criminal and addiction workshop. Number four, consideration accept MPH Industries as the lowest and best quote to acquire new radar guns. There'll be nine of them for the, uh, brand-new Durango's that came out at $14,535. Number five, consideration accepted resignation of Brandy Cakes effective November 2nd, 2025. And number six, consideration to accept Axon Enterprises the lowest and best quote to acquire new and additional body cameras at the, uh, price of $28,899.20.
Good evening. I'll take all three of mine together, sir. Item number one is consideration to approve firefighter Tyler Herring to travel to Baton Rouge, Louisiana for rope rescue device-based rescue technician class, December 14th to December 19th. Item number two is request consideration to purchase six air packs, six face pieces, and 12, uh, air bottles, MEEP, on state contract. Item number three is consideration to purchase, uh, search and rescue helmets and Peritech multi-force basic airbag kit, North America Fire Equipment, for $15,482.15 plus any shipping cost that maker.
This time I'd like to, uh, retire to determine the necessity of being in executive session. Motion by my member Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Luke Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Got here just in time, Matthew. I know. All right. Y'all would give us a few minutes?
Consider the name, Joe.
There were --
Running yet?
There were no votes taken in executive session, Mayor.
Thank you board very much for your patience tonight. We'll get through it. We will have a work session on the zoning map and zoning ordinance post haste as soon as we can get some agreement on what the best date is and hope you can all attend. Thank you for being here and remember we got a football game Thursday night playing Meridian. Looks like we'll be third and playing either Ocean Springs or Gulfport, one of the two in the first round of playoff. All right, thank you board. Appreciate it. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Dave Ferris, second by Luke Ocker. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you board. All right. Joey. Need two books. Two books. One.